Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome back to Glendale City Council. It's been a month, so it'll take us a while to figure out what we do up here. But anyhow, it's been pleasant to be away. But we're back for the September 10th, 2013 meeting of the council again at 6:05 PM. Apologize for being late. May we roll call?
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. Our flag's lit tonight will be led by Councilmember Sananian, the invocation by City Clerk Arice.
Please join in me pledging allegiance to the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for the invocation. Tomorrow marks the anniversary of a dark day in our nation's history. It marks a day when nearly 3,000 innocent lives were lost in one of the worst coordinated acts of terrorism in our nation's history. That they serve to remind us that life is impermanent and fleeting, that we are all too vulnerable to senseless violence. It was an occasion that made many of us weep for the loss of people we had not even met, promised to forge on and ensure that these deaths were not in vain. September 11th, as we mark this significant date, let us pray for the families of everyone who is affected on the day of those attacks, the victims, and first responders who all perished. Let us pray for the families they left behind, for whom tomorrow will be much more difficult day to endure than anyone else. Let us also pray for humanity and world peace, and for understanding and tolerance to govern our actions as proud Americans and as inhabitants of this planet. We ask that our prayers of peace spreads out of these chambers in our city and reaches those who would rather resort to violence and terror to achieve their goals, and hope that they are touched by the spirit of mutual respect, love, and peace, tonight and always. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Wait, we have your report.
Agenda for the September 10th, 2013 regular meeting of Glendale City Council is postponed Friday, September 6th, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What is next, please?
Three under presentation and appointments. Three A is agenda preview for the meetings of September 17th, 2013.
Disappears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for September 17th, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we don't have any business agenda items. That afternoon, to commence at 3:00 PM for the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority, we have two items: Public Hearing, Director of Community Development regarding Zoning Code Amendments to Address Housing Element and Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice Programs. Second is Director of Community Development and Economic Development and Asset Management, and this is regarding adjustment to the adopted 2013-14 Low Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund, 2013 budget in connection with the Doring Gardens Affordable Housing Project. Also that afternoon, we do have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council, and this is Director of Community Development, proposed mixed-use project containing 166 dwelling units and retail on the ground floor to be located at 125 North Central Avenue. That evening for the City Council meeting, we have a few consent items: Director of Public Works, approval of final map of tract number 70329. This is for an 18-unit condominium conversion subdivision, and it's located at 817 East Palmer Avenue. Director of Public Works, additional transit bus inspections. Also Director of Public Works, this is regarding Beeline Operational Analysis. And Director of Community Development, Brand Boulevard Parklet Project, this is a resolution appropriating funds for the project. Director of Community Services and Parks, Essencia Homeless Access Center and Emergency Shelter Rehab Project. Adoption of ordinances, ordinance amending the zoning code establishment, establishing the MS Medical Service Zone, and ordinance adopting zoning map amendments. And lastly, Director of Human Resources, Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Glendale and the Employees Association. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, please.
Three B is introduction of Veteran and Veteran Internship Program by Talin Mangioglu, District Director for Senator Carol Lou.
Thank you. Come forth.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver and City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to share this program with you. Last year, our office explored different ways to support our returning veterans. Our surrounding communities formed veteran coalitions in an effort to provide much-needed wraparound services. I can honestly say, here in Glendale, we have one of the best veteran coalitions. Currently, almost every legislative office is working on a veteran outreach project. It is our belief that a veteran can better assess the needs of a fellow veteran and gauge the effectiveness of our outreach. When we first started this project, our office met with various state departments, EDD, DMV, and community colleges, to better understand what deficits there were in our system, and how we, as a Senate office, could improve them. One of the issues identified was a lack of job opportunities for these returning heroes. They were now competing within a job market that was already on overload from young college graduates seeking job opportunities. The aim of the internship is to provide veterans with a robust experience that promotes long-term career skills to be used in the public and private sectors. Our veterans are some of the most highly trained and skilled members of our society, but they often experience a rough transition to the civilian workforce. Most legislative offices offer internships to high school seniors and college students. Therefore, the idea of an internship is not new. However, a veteran internship dedicated solely to teaching and training and working with veterans for a legislative office is a novelty. By working together, we can honor the commitment to truly care for our veterans, including their professional development. The goal to introduce this, the goal is to introduce this internship to the state legislature, encouraging them to adopt the program and implement it to meet the needs of their district. The ultimate objective is to have each member of the state legislature have a veteran on staff as a district representative, working with veteran cases, veteran-related issues, and veteran outreach. Our pilot internship is supported by the Southern California Gas Company. They have sponsored this internship with a generous $5,000 stipend. The purpose of this stipend is to offset the financial burden and unpaid position. Student veterans are often non-traditional students with many financial obligations. As a result, the GI Bill benefits are used as a primary source of income, thus taking time off to pursue an unpaid internship. This stipend encourages and allows student veterans to bolster their professional resume. At this point, I'd like to introduce our veteran intern Sergeant Sam Tapia, and have him say a couple of words.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of City of Glendale. First off, I'd like to thank Mayor Weaver for allowing me to be here in the City Council. It's been an honor to serve this country, and it will be an honor to serve our veterans in our district, especially in Glendale.
Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to also recognize Tony Tartalia from the gas company.
Who?
Tony Tartalia.
Never heard of him. Oh, oh, that guy?
I'd like to recognize the gas company with a Senate recognition of their sponsorship.
Well, he's a good man with the gas company. He's done a lot. He's...
(applause)
Plus, he also serves on the Board of Trustees of our community college. You didn't want to say anything, did you? Go ahead, say a couple of words.
I'm just happy to be here, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, aren't we all? And, as you know, Mr. Quintero is a leading proponent for veterans' issues in Glendale, so there's two veterans up here that appreciate what you're doing.
Both Talin and the ex-Marine have come to our Veterans Coalition meeting and been actively involved, so appreciate it.
And that is really the role of this internship. You will be seeing Sam throughout the community in his outreach.
Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Okay, what is next?
And three C is service award for 25 years of service to Chris Tsukishima.
Mayor Weaver, council members, and members of the audience. And I got to throw this in, Liz, who is Chris's wife. Real quick, before I even start on any of this, Chris met his wife at his 20-year high school reunion. I don't know that I've ever heard of anything like that happening, but he's been married for 21 years now. Met his wife at his high school reunion, so it's kind of like a high school sweetheart thing that just never really happened until a few years later. Anyway, my name is Ray Cooley, and I'm the Building Maintenance Supervisor in the Public Works Department, and I appreciate you guys allowing me the opportunity to introduce and recognize one of my staff for his 25 years of service to the City of Glendale. This is especially rewarding for me because, as our department is kind of an internal service provider, we don't get much interaction with the public. We don't get much exposure, and this affords me the opportunity to kind of introduce to the public one of the gems in this jewel city. By the way, I have to share this with you. Every time I do these service awards or whatever, I get up front of a crowd. I'm not a public speaker, so if I stumble and I fall, excuse me, I'll get back up and we'll continue on.
Right ahead.
But I'm introducing Chris Tsukishima. Chris was born here in Glendale, attended school in Sunland and Tahanga, attended Pierce Junior College before transferring to Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, where he received his Bachelor's of Science in Natural Resource Management. Chris worked for the Forestry Service for a number of years, and then worked at Angeles Shooting Range until he finally began serving the City of Glendale in 1979. He started as a gardener for Glendale Unified School District and was promoted to Senior Maintenance Worker in 1984. He was hired by the city as a building repairer in 1988 and was promoted to electrician in 2012. This is the first 25-year employee that you've ever had that just passed his probation. A couple of notables about Chris's work, and this is for the public as much as anything because I think you folks know this. This chamber that we meet in, this chamber was renovated by our staff about three years ago. Chris had a hand in all of this, and I just want, you know, you guys to kind of look around and see that this is some of our handiwork. Another thing that Chris does in addition to his day-to-day responsibilities, and this is more for the public as well, the tunnels and overpasses that we have throughout the city. Chris has been working tirelessly over the last few weeks to retrofit all of those tunnels with new, energy-efficient, and long-lasting LED lighting, so that those tunnels would be lit up for the public to use at nighttime without the fear of people being in there and for damage. So I hope that everybody that uses those tunnels will see and realize the wonderful things that are happening. But I don't want to just bore you guys with work-related facts about Chris. I want to tell you a little bit about him personally, and I know I'm on a short window here. It's only 29 minutes, I promise. Chris is as intelligent a person you are ever going to meet. There is not a conversation that you can have with Chris about anything that he's not fluent in. Chris has a laugh that can be heard and recognized throughout the show. Somebody knows that. And Chris will do anything for you. He literally will do anything for you. I have to be kind of careful here because I don't want you guys to stereotype Chris. He loves NASCAR. He's an avid hunter, an avid fisherman. If you tell him that you saw a bazooka, ABC, he'll say, "Oh, that's a piece of junk," because he knows exactly what you're talking about. And he enjoys camping up in the mountains. And the rest of this stereotype thing, Chris took time off a couple of years ago just to put new tires on his vacation home. So I'll say it, Chris kind of considers himself a redneck, but Chris is an outstanding employee, and we love him in our department. So I just want to say, Chris, congratulations on 25 years of service. It's been an honor and a privilege to be your supervisor, and I know that when I retire and gone, the next supervisor is gaining a wonderful employee. So thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
Chris, don't go away.
No.
I got to read this fidget machine for you. Says, "Chris, this certificate is in expression of sincere appreciation with 25 years of loyal and faithful service. May the future bring you a full measure of those endowments which long service and devotion to duty so richly deserve." So pleasure to give this to you. And, oh, you have the other stuff.
Yes, I do. This is your box, and I've seen enough of these and been enough of these that this is addressed to you, but the way I understand it, it goes directly to the wife.
You got that right.
As you know, I'm here virtually every day. I see you all over, and I was in here when this was broken down to a shell, remember?
Mm-hmm.
We're pounding out. We didn't know a window was there, and all that, so... Are you going to be here 10 more years, for 30?
I don't know. Whatever works out.
You've got a nice job, I wish I had. Lot less stress. Go ahead and say anything you'd like.
I just want to thank the council for the time to take recognition out, and I'm just happy you're all happy with my, the service I've put in for the city for the 25 years. Usually, you don't get to spend this long a time within an organization, but the city's allowed me to work, learn a lot of things, and advance, and meet, work with a lot of good people, and I've been through quite a few city councils, so I'm familiar with a lot of you, so really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. (applause) And what is next, please?
Three D is a commendation for Geraldine Saunders on her 90th birthday.
Okay, this is one that I, one of the few that I decided I was going to give to Geraldine, wanted to. Friend for many, many years, and I hope I wrote this, that it's okay. I couldn't get it all in, but let me say what I did. In recognition of your 90th birthday celebration, you have accomplished so much in your lifetime: Model, title of Mrs. Glendale, first female cruise director, author of 11 books, helping create the Love Boat Television Series, writing horoscopes for more than 300 newspapers worldwide on a daily basis, nutrition expert, and negotiating a Las Vegas musical based on the Love Boat series. Your accomplishments are truly commendable, exemplary, that will, with determination and the right mindset, can achieve success. As you have stated, if there's something you wish for, something, if there's something you wish for, something you hope to do, you can make that come about. Yes, indeed, Geraldine, you have succeeded in so many, many ways. It's my privilege to call you a friend. Congratulations, and many more happy birthdays to come. I forgot to tell you to come up. Please.
(applause)
Exciting.
Geraldine, I know I didn't get everything in here. I fully put so much on the page.
Good interview.
Very welcome.
Thanks.
But she's done so much more than what I could list here. Still writing the horoscopes, right?
365 days a year.
365 days a year, so you can tell her your horoscope, she'll tell you all about what you want.
I just told that little writer over there. Thank you, Mayor Dave Weaver. I appreciate this so much. I can't believe that this is happening to me. What a lucky day I have today. Thank you so much, all of you. Never thought I'd live to be 90 years old, but spent most of it in Glendale, and I traveled the world with, on the Love Boats as a cruise director, been to almost every place that a ship will go. But I'm always glad to get back to Glendale because Glendale is the best city in the whole wide world.
That's good to hear. And Geraldine, I'll plug your book. Dick Murray, who has passed on, Sheila Farrell Murray, his wife, wrote this book about Geraldine.
Called The Love Boat Lady.
Love Boat Lady, and I assume you can get the book in the different stores?
Amazon.
On Amazon. The other thing that nobody knows here, when my daughter was getting married in Hawaii back in 2006, lo and behold, she's there, in Hawaii, at the Royal Hawaiian Hotel, where we were staying. I know. And so the next day after the wedding, the kids took off on their honeymoon to Kauai, and my wife and I went to dinner with Geraldine in the Royal Hawaiian. It was July 24th, night 2006. So Geraldine's been a friend a good number of years.
Night your grandchild was conceived, right?
Yeah. And you can only, you can only turn 90 once, so what the heck?
I have a specially lucky day today, not only receiving this award from everyone here, but I had three people come from CBS, from New York, to my house this morning at 9 o'clock, to tell me the good news that not only is Love Boat the musical going to be in Las Vegas, but Nader Handler, which is like the biggest name in show business in New York, in theater, is going to do it in New York, on the New York stage.
Wow.
I am very excited today.
Boy, you're going to be...
This is really tops it off. Thank you so much.
You're going to be heading off, right?
Thank you.
To New York and Vegas.
Yes, we'll all have to, I have to get a bus and take you along with me for overnight.
You got a deal, Geraldine. We'll get together for dinner. (applause)
Dave, let me just say, in addition to obviously being a very intelligent woman who's made her mark in the business world and creative world, I've been to many parties with Geraldine, and she is always a life of the party. She has a knack of extending good times, and congratulations to you.
And Geraldine, you don't have to stay. You can go with your friends, out and have a nice dinner. You might get bored here. It's up to you.
Have you...
Oh, nice to meet you both. Well, thank you for coming. Her birthday was September 3rd, but we were dark, so that's why we're doing it today. Okay, what is next, please?
Item number four on the agenda is City Council and Staff Comments.
I guess I may find. Anybody have any comments?
I do. Recently, there have been some questions and complaints about the Broadway-Brazil Crossing. It is in an unfinished state, although Glendale has completed its side. The bottom line is, after a little bit of inquiry, the City of Los Angeles has advertised their portion of the project for bids just recently. The bids are going to be due the first week of October, and then construction will begin starting the first of the year to complete the upgrades at that very important crossing at Broadway and Brazil. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, what is next, please?
Item number five is Consent Items. Following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I'd like to pull D, E, and I.
I will move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second?
Thank you. Roke.
And just for my clarification, that was D, E, and I.
D, E, and I.
Okay. Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Okay, please read five. D, end of the record?
Item D is Acting Director of Public Works Regarding Tree Maintenance Program, or Director of Public Works Regarding Tree Maintenance Program Contract. E1 is a motion authorizing amendment to the contract with West Coast Arborist, Inc., for additional funds in amount of $124,000 for remaining two years of the contract.
I only pulled this item for one reason, if I can find it. We get a lot of criticism from a few people about what a terrible city this is, and this action here gives more money for the tree trimming, for watering, new planting, whatever. And there's a statement in here that says, "All street trees are trimmed every six years, and all street palm trees are trimmed every three years." I remember that. I was reading an article this Sunday about Los Angeles. Don't mean to pick on them, but somebody had asked a staffer about street trees in LA, and says, "The city currently prunes street trees on a 45-year tree pruning cycle." 45 years! So it concludes, "If your trees were pruned in 2005, you're looking at 2050," which coincidentally is my best guess as to when the city will complete the new edible landscaping ordinance. Now, I think that's something. We do it every six years and every three years, and it takes 45 years for LA to get around it. Not bad for Glendale, even with the constraints we have fiscally. With that as the motion on.
I'll move the items.
Second? Well, this is just D, correct?
Just D.
Second, that?
Roke.
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Read five E.
Five E is Director of Public Works Regarding Implementation of Glendale Bicycle Transportation Plan Phase One, in connection with specification number 3521. E1 is a resolution adopting spec and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Okay, I put this on because I'll be voting against it because the public hasn't been involved. This is going to be bike information and stuff up on Honolulu and Pennsylvania, Duran, Sarito's, Broadway, putting markings on the streets, without the public having any input to it. And while some people in the city greatly admire bicycles, as I do, in the right locations and times, doing it on the public streets of Glendale without involving the public in this, even though it might be approved in some plan, but I'm sorry, I can't vote for this. So if there's a motion, go approve it.
I'll make the motion. I support the bicycle transportation plan, not only for recreational use, but also for everyday people who can go back and forth to work.
Right. Is there a second?
Second, and I also support it. This is the, of all the options for creating a bikeway, this is the least intrusive for...
Absolutely.
...motorists.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate the comments you made, Mr. Mayor, about getting into a longer discussion and greater discussion, and perhaps we will do that at some...
Yeah, just my opinion. I feel leave it. I rode a bicycle to school. Okay, now Roke.
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
No. Read five. Aye.
Item I is City Manager Regarding Federal Legislative Advocacy Services. I1 is a motion authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with the Ferguson Group LLC, in the amount not exceed $56,250-plus, dollars plus up to $3,375 for reimbursable expenses for the term of October 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014, and extend the initial term for three consecutive one-year terms, terms each in an amount of $75,000 per year, plus up to $4,500 for reimbursable expenses per year. I2 is a resolution appropriating $59,625 to fund contract.
Thank you. I pulled this because I voted against it when it came up, so to stay with my position on this firm, I wanted to vote no, so I pulled it. Okay, Roke, is there a motion?
I'll move the items.
I'll second it.
Roke.
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. No, no, no.
Your no vote is noted. Thank you.
Okay, what's next, please?
Next item, under six, is, this is normally the community, the oral communications portion, but we reserve this first portion for three-minute community event announcements. We will revisit the full five-minute portion of oral communications at the conclusion of all city business.
And the tag team match of Sharon Townsend and Paula Devine, reciting a PO Box 201.
We're a good tag team at that. Mayor Weaver and City Council members, my name is Sharon Townsend, and I'm proud to be the leader of Glendale Healthy Kids, and I have our very esteemed Board of Directors member, Paula Devine, who is also the Chair of our Development Committee. For more than 20 years, well, nearly 20 years, feels like more than 20 years, we have provided healthcare access to children who do not have access to healthcare. This past year, we provided 550 units of medical care for children who do not have insurance or underinsured, and we provided 3,300 units of healthcare education. We're in every first grade class in the school district. Additionally, we are in nearly probably 28 preschools in the district, all of the Head Start preschools providing healthcare education. And I'm proud to say, for the first time this year, we are combining our Healthcare Festival with the Armenian Medical Association Health Festival, and that will be on November 2nd at the Civic Auditorium. At this time, I'd like Paula to tell you about a couple of events that we have coming up.
Mayor Weaver, City Council, and staff. Ms. Zern, welcome back.
Thank you very much.
First time I've seen you. Glendale Healthy Kids cannot stand alone. We need the community to help us out so that we can be sure that all children in our city are, have healthcare. So we've brought a program back. Guess what's back? It's Guess Who's Coming to Dinner. We have nine venues, nine menus, and nine times that you can meet new and different people. It's so exciting. It's $100 per dinner, and the first two are this coming Saturday and Sunday, and there'll be two dinners... We have nine venues, nine menus, and nine, um, times that you can meet new and different people. There, it's so exciting. It's $100 per dinner, and, uh, the first two are this coming Saturday and Sunday, and there'll be two dinners every night. And then the following, uh, after, uh, two weeks, Saturday, the 28th, and Sunday, the 29th, will be the next two. Now, we have wonderful houses this, this, uh, year. We have, um, a home up in the hills with, uh, and it's going to be a very classic black-and-white night with Scotch tasting and martinis and classical music. Uh, we have Dr. Zorate, uh, friend of, uh, Councilman Quintero's. He's doing a Spanish night. He has a restaurant in, uh, I think it's in NoHo, and, uh, he's going to have tapas and flamenco dancers, and it's going to be wonderful. We have Italian dinners. Um, we have, uh, the fire department, of course. They support us every year and every, every event that we have that, uh, we ask them, they're always there for us. They're doing a lovely dinner at Mary Boger's house, uh, the school district board member. And Kevin Roberts, if you're not interested in Scotch or martinis or any of that other, uh, Kevin Roberts, who is the CEO of Glendale Adventist, has been generous enough to open his house, uh, to a non-alcoholic dinner, and, uh, that's going to be lovely, too. We have sold at least two of them out so far, so please, if you're interested, go to glendalehealthykids.org or call Debbie Hinkley, uh, or call Glendale Healthy Kids. It's $100 an evening. Uh, there are, uh, right now, seven evenings open, so I hope you'll all come and support Glendale Healthy Kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Uh, I have another speaker, Hannah Lazarus, is it? I'm not quite sure. I can't read your name.
Hi, I'm Hannah Lazarus. I live here in South Glendale, and I'm here on behalf of Glendale. We have a really fun and easy volunteer opportunity coming up. It's the, uh, bicycle and pedestrian count. So if you're an engineer like me, if you like data, um, if you like research, this is a really fun way to participate. Uh, there's a quick training that's going to be in about a week. There will be two of them. Um, then a few days later, there are actually gonna be two days and a morning time slot and an afternoon time slot all throughout the city, where you can stand on that corner and count the number of bicycles coming through the intersection, count the number of pedestrians coming through the intersection, and, uh, just tally it all up and work together with us to create a picture of how transit might be changing in the city, um, and patterns of transportation. Our website has all the dates and times. There's a bunch to choose from, um, a bunch of locations to choose from, and your participation. Anybody who wants to participate, come on down. That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, what is next?
Next, under action items, 8A is fire chief regarding proposed fire recruit academy for fiscal year 2014. 8A1 is a resolution appropriating $624,000 for firefighter recruitment and training academy.
Mr. Quintero.
Actually, uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, members of the city council and, uh, apologize to the city clerk, uh, we are hoping to take the hearings out of order so that-
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
-folks would be able to, uh, participate in that process.
Hey, timeout, timeout.
If that, uh, pleases the council.
Yes, it's been gone three, four weeks.
We're out of practice.
I can't remember where the arrows are pointing. Now, we're gonna take the, the hearings out of order so those people can get out of here.
Certainly.
So, let's read 9A under the record. This is a hearing.
9A is director of public works regarding conditional vacation of a certain portion of Verdugo Road at Verdugo Boulevard, vacation case number 170V. At 9A1 is a resolution ordering the vacation. At 9A2 is a resolution adopting plan number 12-229.
I think I can answer this one.
Would you like to do the report, sir?
If you're going up Verdugo Road, you know, hoo-ching, Honolulu, you make that sweeping bed to the right, it's going away. Make it a better, so the crossing, anybody crossing on this, across Verdugo, that's a long cross plus the additional, uh, areas, so this will straighten out the bend, make it safer for the pedestrians and the, and the traffic. Is that right, Mr. Glanian and Mr. Zern? I see you back here. Take care of yourself here.
This has actually been a project that, so I can date back to when I first started here.
That many years?
People have been asking about that. That many years.
And then, uh, due to the vacation, is that land gonna go to the adjacent property owners?
Yeah, they, they support it. Gonna get a little land, maybe they'll landscape instead of having all that concrete out in front. Anybody need anything else?
Okay, um-
Yeah, oh, I forgot. I'll open a public hearing. I don't see any cards. I'll close the public hearing.
Okay, I will, uh, introduce 9A1 and 2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Roke.
I'm sorry, the motion was made by-
Mr. Quintero?
Council members Friedman, Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Sananian-
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Oh, I'm really rusty. Okay, let's try 9B.
9B is director of community development regarding proposed amendments to Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the MS Medical Service Zone, the general plan text and map amendment and zoning text and map amendment, and adopt the environmental review document. E1 is resolution certifying the negative declaration, number 2011-003. 2 is resolution adopting general plan land use element text and map amendment. 3 is ordinance for introduction to amend the zoning code establishing the MS zone. 4 is an ordinance for introduction to adopt a proposed zoning map amendment.
And Mr. Quintero.
Yes, this is another, uh, public hearing, a very brief public hearing at that, as the council has seen and taken testimony, uh, when you first initiated this process several months ago. With that, we'll have, uh, principal planner Laura Stotler give you just a, a very quick overview of this area around Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
Open the hearing, Mr. Mayor.
I'll open the hearing. I was gonna do it after.
And Mayor Weaver, members of council, uh, this is a proposal for a zone change and general plan amendment. Both of them include map and text amendments to create, uh, essentially a hospital zone. We're calling it the medical services zone to benefit hospitals in the city. We've been working with Glendale Medical, uh, Adventist Medical Center to create this zone. The area in the red, that shows the area that we're looking at rezoning, the primary area within that is property owned by the hospital. Glendale Adventist Medical Center has been in operation for over 100 years. Uh, this hospital is a unique use. It tends to be a campus-type development, as all hospitals are. That's why we feel that it's proper to have its own zone, rather than the C3 general commercial, which it presently has now. Over the years, we've had many discretionary permits. We're hoping that with this new zone, we can avoid that because we intend to approve all of them, so we've included those uses within the zoning text as, uh, permitted uses for the hospital. Again, the goal is to facilitate the success of the hospital. It's already integrated well into the community, so we want to make sure that we have zoning that allows it to continue to do so and also be successful. This shows the existing general plan. The area that's in green, that shows the public semi-public designation. The area that's in, uh, black is the area that we would have, um, all zoned public, or actually designated, public semi-public. And there's a close-up of the area that we're looking at. This is general of the area bounded by Sinclair, Chevy Chase, Glen Oaks, Harvey, and Wilson Terrace. This is what the present designation is right now for the zoning code. See the majority of it in red, that's C3 general commercial. We also have some residential in the area that's R2250, although a majority of that area is owned by the hospital or the Glendale Adventist Church. And then we also have some, within that area, there's also a parking structure and various parking lots. And we do have a couple of residential units. We had a public meeting. We met with everybody and invited everybody in the area. We've received no, um, opposition to this proposal at all. And this is what we're proposing for the zone, MS Medical Services. We have three different height limits. They match the height limits that are already permitted under existing zoning. So MS3 would have a 90-foot height limit, same as C33. MS2 would have a 50-foot height limit. That's what's out there right now for the C31. And then we have the MS1 that would have a 41-foot height limit, same as the maximum permitted under the R2250 zone. And as a result of the proposal, we were really conscious of not having a zone that would make somebody non-conforming. So, we're seeking to create a zone that will allow the hospital to expand without creating non-conformities in the area. We want to create a uniform zone for this hospital that could be expanded to be used at other hospitals throughout Glendale. Uh, we also want to add flexibility for the existing uses on the site. And, um, we've provided a holistic amendment. Not only did we create the zone for the MS, we've also integrated that in the other areas of our, our zoning code, including the parking and, and design review. So, the planning commission considered this last month. They've unanimously recommended that the council approve this project. There is a negative declaration that's included in the packet that we've prepared. Planning commission took a look at that, too. And as part of the recommendation, we're asking you to adopt the, the negative declaration. We're asking you to adopt a resolution to amend the general plan map and text related to public semi-public to allow this to occur. And then we're asking you to introduce the zoning ordinance for the zoning text and the zoning map to create an MS zone. And that concludes staff's presentation. We do have, um, Brian George from Glendale Medical, Glendale Adventist Medical Centers here, as well as Rodney Khan, who is the project applicant.
Um, I do have a question on the setbacks.
Yes.
You have as much as 90-foot, wait, 200-foot frontage on three. You have 50 on another, and 50 on another. 200 feet, that's almost, that's two-thirds of a football field.
Yeah, that's actually the frontage requirement that we're looking at to get the maximum height. We want to encourage people who develop in the area to develop in coordination with the hospital. In order to get the maximum height, they would need to, to order to have the frontage.
Because-
Exactly, it's for the future.
Because the building's right there on Chevy Chase, right out to the sidewalk now.
That is correct.
So, anything else would have to setback greater.
Right, it's not actually a setback, it, it's frontage. So, it just shows how much with, you, how much frontage you need on the street in order to build the height.
I'm sorry, I read it wrong. I forget. Okay, thanks, Laura. I gotta, uh, any questions?
A question, uh, not, it really doesn't make a difference, but, so previously, most of the, the zone that's at issue was zoned at C3, right?
That's correct.
And now, we want to make it into MS3. So, as, as C3, was it non-compliant, or?
No, it was compliant under C3, but C3 is designed for basically any commercial zoning you have in the city. It's not really designed to deal with these campus-type developments that are large, where you might have areas that frankly are not visible from the public. You might have multiple property lines, but all owned by the same owner. So, what we've had in the past has been a series of approvals that Glendale Adventist Medical Center has had to have because of the site characteristics. What we've tried to do with the MS zone is address those site characteristics to reduce the amount of discretionary permits that we need. It's basically to accommodate these large, the large site.
Thank you.
All I want to know is, I won't have a conflict of interest since I was born there. Okay, I'm clear? Good, good. Thank you, Laura. Okay, I have one card.
Oh, no, no, go ahead. I was gonna make the motion.
Rodney Khan?
Uh, good evening, mayor, uh, city council, city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are on Brand Boulevard here in the City of Glendale. I have had the opportunity, uh, to work with the Glendale Adventist Medical Center for the past 12 years on their projects. We strongly, strongly support this new medical services zone, and we think it makes a lot of sense. Uh, the hospital is not currently looking at new construction or expanding. What they are trying to do is look to master plan or to plan for the future growth and expansion of the hospital. Uh, one of the reasons this was very important to us is because over the years, when we have been building the new buildings out on the campus, uh, many of those buildings, whether they needed to be repaired because of earthquake damage or upgrades, state requirements, or just expansion itself, required variances or required special use permits. And what we're hoping is that this new, uh, zone, medical services zone and the general plan amendment will actually eliminate those requirements. The other thing we're doing as well is we are looking at identifying signs, and this is very important for a medical campus. Uh, when people are going to the medical facility, it's usually for either, uh, an emergency or an appointment, so they need to find their way rather quickly. So, we wanted to simplify the signs, make them easy to read, and for wayfinding on a large campus. So, all of this, which is being proposed, makes a lot of sense to us, and we strongly support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I know I've got lost on that campus more than once. I thought I knew where I was going. Now, I'll close the public hearing. I know you talk to the neighbors because my barber, the last 60 years, his barber shop is in this zone, and he's, he was okay with it. So, he was also Mr. Starbert's barber. He still, yeah, he was in there an hour before me, a couple, a week or so ago. Ernie, that's right. He's been around a long time. And Mr. Quintero?
Okay, I very much support this, and I told the staff, uh, it's worth contacting Glendale Memorial. We have two big hospitals in the city.
And Verdugo Hills.
See what we can do, uh, yeah, now that, uh, SC has taken over Verdugo Hills, there's, um, I don't think there's quite as much real estate to play with up there. I mean, I don't think the zone will be quite as big as, as this is or Memorial, but it's certainly worth pursuing. I think this is a wonderful idea.
And Memorial's expanding, planning, spending over $60 million up there. Turn it into a premier hospital, is what they say. SC usually, uh, does things the right way. Not counting the football team, and we won't talk about that.
Only have one quarterback.
Jeez.
There's no other comments. I will move the, uh-
Close the hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, close the hearing.
Many resolutions at 9B1, 2, and then the ordinances at 9B3 and 4 need to be introduced.
Separately?
Was that, they can be introduced at the same time, but the resol, the resolutions need to be, uh, moved and seconded and adopted by motion.
And then the other two.
Okay, I will move the two resolutions.
Correct.
And introduce, and introduce the two.
Move on the-
I will move the two resolutions.
Okay, Roke.
Council members Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Sananian-
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye, and you're introducing the-
And I'll introduce the two ordinances.
9B3 and 4. Okay. Thank you. Dennis can leave. Okay, now, we should go back to 8A. Have you already read that in the record?
I did, but, uh, it's a short item. I'll read it again. It's fire chief regarding proposed fire recruit academy for fiscal year 2014. Resolution appropriating $624,000 for firefighter recruitment and training academy.
Okay, Mr. Quintero.
Yes, sir. Through attrition, we have a number of vacancies, uh, on the department, and as is the custom, uh, we seek to fill those with a, uh, a fire academy, and so, uh, we are in that process through recruitment, as you have probably read, for upwards of 3,000, uh, potential, uh, applicants. And, uh, the chief is here to give you a very brief overview as to what the academy to, uh, select the ultimate firefighters would be and entail and cost.
Do my colleagues need a report?
Sure, why not?
Okay, if you want to. Write a here, chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Harold Scoggins, fire chief. Um, as our city manager said, Mr. Quintero, this is, um, to cover our costs for, um, the selection, um, interviews, backgrounds, medicals, equipping, and training, um, our newest firefighters. It's an exciting time for the Glendale Fire Department. Last time we've hired, it's been several years since we've, since we've hired any new firefighter, so it's, it's a pretty exciting time. so it's, it's a pretty exciting time. One thing I would like to note is that, in the staff report, it does mention a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars of the academy costs that will be covered for mutual aid responses. It's important to note that, because the last time we actually did a fire academy, it was of no expense to the city, because our mutual aid costs covered the complete cost of the fire academy. We didn't get all the way there at this time, but our people have been out all over the state in the last few weeks, so we know some additional dollars will be coming in. So, any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, I do have a card.
So the public is aware about how many firefighters are we talking about?
We're, right now, we're targeting fifteen new firefighters. That's the target, and that'll cover our attrition, our expected vacancies throughout the balance of the year. And that will also cover a six-over hire for firefighters that will cover vacancies due to overtime sick leave and different things such as that.
How many have applied so far?
We had approximately thirty-two hundred forty-seven applications submitted with the city, approximately twenty-nine hundred selected dates to take the written exam. We expect approximately two thousand to actually show up and take the exam. From that, we'll take the top three to four hundred into oral interviews. From that, we'll look at the top fifty to higher.
That's something, when I was growing up, I used to want to chase fire engines, but you didn't necessarily want to be a fireman. Some did, some didn't. Look at it now. It's a desirable profession to be in, for many reasons, and so, that's why the big turnout. Thanks, chief. Question, question, Mr. Sanian?
Chief, the amount that's at issue right now, that's hopefully going to get allocated tonight, is, that money's not going towards this recruitment period, is it? Is that money, will it be used for the actual recruitment process?
Not used for the recruitment, the recruitment period is pretty, is closed. The application bulletin period closed in August, so that's done. It will cover the cost of the written exam, the oral interviews, medicals, equipment, everything forward.
Okay, so the, that's what I meant, the process, not necessarily that two-week period during which people submitted their applications?
No, doesn't cover anything there.
Is that, that's, so a portion of this money will go towards that, right? And the rest is going to go to the academy, towards the training? I just want to make sure I understand this correctly.
Sure. I think in the report, fifty thousand is listed to go for the written examination. A portion of the additional funds would cover the week-long oral interviews that we have to staff, six panels to do for a week. Then each of the new hires would get a background. We estimate we'll probably take between thirty and fifty into backgrounds to get the number we need out. Each background is approximately a thousand dollars. We have to buy equipment and turnouts, for example. A set of turnouts for each new recruit is approximately twenty-five hundred dollars. And then it'll also cover their salaries and benefits and everything there throughout the course of the thirteen- or fourteen-week academy.
Okay.
And the instructors to train them.
Okay, yep, thank you, thanks for the clarification.
Okay, chief, I have one speaker, Mike Mohill. Two minutes.
Council members, my name is Mike Mohill. As working families struggle to make ends meet, and the median income in Glendale is less than fifty thousand dollars annually, on tonight's table is to hire fifteen new firefighters at a starting salary of sixty-eight thousand dollars. And after thirty years, these individuals will know they will be receiving a hundred thousand dollar plus lifetime pension at age fifty-five. The city received more than three thousand two hundred online applications, that's three thousand two hundred online applications. Candidates must pass a written test, a polygram test, credit check, and step into a background investigation. But no college degree is required for this job. Being a firefighter is a hazardous job, but it's not dangerous according to the Department of Labor Statistics. But a commercial fisherman is considered the most dangerous job, and that man's salary is like thirty thousand dollars a year. Followed by, and danger, is our loggers, commercial pilots, sanitation workers, roofers, iron workers, farmers and ranchers, truckers and delivery men, electrical power line and taxi drivers. Over eighty-two percent of the fire department experience is medical in nature. Council member, why does a police officer whose job is more hazardous and more dangerous than a firefighter receive less money? We need to put all new firefighters on social security and a 401K plan, just like the folks who pay the bills. Unfortunately, for the next four years, we have, we can count on the re-elected council members Friedman and Najarian to protect and to serve the fire union, as they both received over five thousand dollars in campaign contributions in the two thousand and thirteen election.
Thank you, thank you. You're done, you're done.
Thank you again, my name is Mike Mohill.
I wish you'd go down and talk to the relatives of the firefighters that were killed, and the fires that have been fighting. I'd like you to tell them it's not dangerous.
Mr. Weaver, let me, it's not hazardous, you know, I've said this many times before. It's just ironic that, that this gentleman thinks it's hazardous but not dangerous, and we're less than twenty-four hours away from commemorating all of the firefighters that ran into those towers, as well as police that ran into those towers when everyone was trying to get out. They ran into those towers, looking up above them and watching the flames. Then we have the firefighters that died in that recent incident in the west, and others that die on a regular basis, and are maimed, and can't walk, and have all kinds of physical issues. So the idea that firefighters have this wonderful life, yeah, we get to watch them as we drive by these stations, and we're cleaning, or whatever it is that they're doing. But whenever something truly erupts, that's who society calls on to go into that dangerous situation. But we're subjected to this on a regular basis, and nothing I say tonight is going to stop it. I'm ready to make the...
Well, no, chief, I want him to say a couple of things. Firefighters, you know, you're just overblown, you should be getting a lot less money.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to cover, a couple of points that the speaker made. The minimum requirements are eighteen years of age, classy driver's license, and an EMT. But when you get thirty-two hundred firefighters, most, if not all of our firefighters come in with college degrees. What he was speaking to was the minimum requirements. When we look at the requirements that these young people come with, they're very well-qualified with, with degrees and paramedic licenses and hazmat certifications, U.S.R. qualifications. Spoke on medical calls. Eighty-five to eighty-eight percent of our calls are medical calls. But that's treating people with HIV, with TB, with hepatitis, and all the diseases you can think of. And many times, our firefighters don't know that walking into someone's home. So to say that's not a dangerous part of our job, it is, because many times we're treating people, and we don't know what they have, and we actually take that home to our families. And when I think about that over a hundred firefighters die in the line of duty, and seventy to eighty thousand firefighters are injured annually, there's about 1.2 million firefighters across the country, and about 300,000 of those firefighters are paid firefighters in major metropolitan areas such as this. When I look at the number of firefighters that have significant injuries and die in the line of duty, such as the Granite Mountain hotshots, who actually served here during the station fire, you know, I know our job is very hazardous and very dangerous, and we do get the best qualified people. Our firefighters work very hard for this community.
Are you saying, those hotshots were here?
Yes, during the station fire.
During the station fire?
Yes.
I want to add, most of the degrees are in fire science.
Variety of different degrees, but our people come in very well-prepared.
Now, I wonder why we don't hear on the news about loggers getting killed, all these others. If they're so hazardous, so dangerous, oh, shut up. You just wonder.
If I may, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead, I could talk.
Chief, while I have you here, there have been some concerns in the community that females and minorities are underrepresented in the fire, in our fire force, fire department. Is the department taking steps to make sure that whatever we can do is done, to make sure that the department is more reflective of the community at large?
Absolutely. One of our strategic goals, in our, in our department's strategic plan, was to, to have a more diverse department that reflects the community. We had an internal recruitment team, and they went out into areas that we haven't gone out to before to recruit women and minorities, and, and these people really care. They aren't receiving any bonuses, these are firefighters in the stations who created posters, who created those QR strips and business cards to hand to people, who went to seminars, who went to different places here in the community, advertised on a variety of different locations, and tried to be in touch with today's young people with Twitter and Facebook and all these different things. So we are taking active steps. There's always more we can do, and things that we're going to continue to learn, but we've come a long way in the last ten years, and I believe in the progress that we're making with the firefighters that we have.
One of the things that's come up from council, and certainly that, that I think the chief has an appreciation for, that we'll be bringing back to the council, is an effort to focus on, on high school-age youth, young men, young women. Because in order to meet those minimum qualifications, particularly the EMT requirement, means that somebody, especially when they're in their teens, early teens, has to think about that career in, in public service, and specifically in the fire service. And so, to the extent that we can reach out to our own youth and do a better job of doing that, I think that's going to be the emphasis of the plan going forward.
Sure. Thank you. And just as a, as a comment, I spent a good chunk of a day with the, the fire department just very recently, about three weeks ago, and indeed, most, all the calls were medical, but like the chief said, I mean, we, the calls ran the gambit. We had a person who had died, and had bloated, and had been just found, and had, had a history of just about every disease you can imagine, and the people on the scene, the first people were the firefighters. We had elderly people who were completely immobile that needed to be handled by our firefighters. So, it's, yes, I mean, it's not, not every call is a, is a fire where you have to basically take a huge risk of being burned alive, but nevertheless, the risk is always there.
Yeah, I remember when that fire started up there, Monrose, the day it started, was one plume of smoke. I just happened to take a picture of it. We had jumped on that fire at that time. So much could have been saved.
Okay, I'll move.
Had those firefighters out there, I mean, you just need them. When that fire comes, we're in a tinderbrush area, they're going to come. Need our fire there. Okay, Mr. Cantaro?
I'll move eight A.
Eight A one's been moved, is there a second? One second. Roll call.
Council members, Friedman, Najarian?
Yes.
Cantaro?
Yes.
Sanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. Yes, please.
Eight B is City Treasurer regarding City of Glendale Investment Policy for fiscal year 2013-14. B one is Resolution Adopting Policy.
Well, well, well. Shoes on the other foot now.
Mr. American, we read the other item, which is a treasurer's item as well.
Yeah, let's do, yeah.
Eight C is City Treasurer regarding Annual Review of the City Portfolio. C one is Motion Accepting Report for Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2013.
Now we can break after his presentation. Mr. Ochoa, you're going to Mr., no, you're not going to.
Yes, the flagship maiden voyage of the SS Manuketan.
Manuketan's on, right ahead, Rafi.
My first question is, does the treasurer know what he's doing? We'll, we'll see in a few minutes.
It's beginning.
The numbers look good.
Okay, good. Rafi Manuketan, City Treasurer, Mayor and council members, great to see you all back. It's been four and a half months, I think, since I've, since I've been here. I must say that I missed it.
You missed this?
I missed the interaction with my colleagues.
Oh, interaction.
And today, we are presenting the investment portfolio for the City of Glendale, which is item eight C, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2013. The investment philosophy and the objectives is, will be guided by the, generally is guided for the City of Glendale by the prudent person rule. The investment objectives, as you are all very familiar with, first and foremost is the preservation of principle. The second objective is ensuring liquidity, making sure that we pay our bills on a daily basis. And third is yield, risk tolerance, risk is not tolerated, and rate of return should at least meet the annual total return on the three-month treasury bills. The total City of Glendale holdings currently are five hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventeen million for June 30, 2013, and four hundred and sixty-five the prior fiscal year.
Next time, could you use a different color?
Yes, I will. And for June, for a fiscal year ending June 30, 2013, there's a decrease in the amount of funds that we were able, the City Treasurer was able to invest, mainly due to the transfer of the Glendale redevelopment agency funds to the successor agency. And there's also an increase, which is the water revenue bonds, which were issued in 2012, and they are part of the holdings currently. The total city investments in cash are three hundred and seventy-four million, as opposed to three ninety-four. Again, the decrease is due to the transfer of the Glendale of approximately thirty million dollars to the, to the successor agency fund. And here is a statistic from June 2011 to June 2012 and 2013. As you can see, our portfolio has diminished to three hundred and seventy-three million. Interest earnings also have diminished to three point two million, it's 1.1 million down from last year. That is mainly due to decreasing interest rates, as well as decreasing the amount of funds that are available for investment. The rate of return is eighty-four basis points for June 2013. It's down from 2012. The monthly average yield for the city portfolio, for the city portfolio is the blue line, and the three-month treasury bill for the city's investment objectives is the red line, and as you can see, the monthly average yield of the city's investment meets and exceeds the annual total return on the three-month treasury bill for the city's investment objective. July is included in this chart just to demonstrate that interest rates are on the rise again. And we are, although we were at eighty-four basis points in June, we are up at, up around eighty-nine to ninety in July and, and August. So things are looking positive. Here's another comparison of prior year to the July 2000, to 2012-13, here is eleven and twelve. As you can see, the rates, which were shown in the prior slide as well. The important aspect of this is that the state pool in the LEAF, which is thirty basis points, which we have considerable amount of funds in, is currently down to twenty-five basis points in, in July and August. Asset allocations for June 2012 and June 2013 hasn't changed much, in terms, in terms of percentages. LEAF is at twenty-three percent. Federal agency notes, that's seven percent. Federal agency notes are bonds that were issued by the federal agency, by federal government, that cannot be refinanced, or cannot be called. And federal agency call was at twenty-six percent. These are, again, federal agency notes that have been issued by the federal government that can be refinanced at certain times that are specified in the notes. LA County pool at ten percent, and negotiable CDs and commercial paper at eight, four and eight percent respectively. The city's investment policy allows up to twenty percent for corporate bonds. Corporate bonds are at twenty-one percent, mainly because the overall city's portfolio has decreased due to the transfer of redevelopment funds. This number, the twenty-one percent number, will decrease to around twenty percent, again, as securities mature by December and January. If the council requires that we decrease the corporate notes down to twenty percent, we would have to sell some of our higher-earning corporate bonds, and I, that would not be recommended at this time. And investment maturities within one year, we have to ensure liquidity, so within one year, we have approximately fifty-two percent. And as you can see, fifty-five point four percent within two years, approximately ten percent three, within four years, eleven percent, and approximately twenty-one, twenty-two percent within five years. That is my presentation to you today. If there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to respond.
Mr. Cantaro?
The highest yields are in corporate paper and commercial paper, but you say we have a twenty percent max on the corporate notes?
Yes, the current city policy is twenty percent maximum for the corporate medium-term notes, and they have to be at investment grade, above average, above medium-term notes, they have to be above BBB rating. The state code allows up to thirty percent, as I did a little research, Pasadena and the City of Burbank, actually, in their portfolios, they allow up to thirty percent.
Okay, and you and I have had this conversation in the past.
Yes.
And it seems to me, since the other instruments we invest in are at such a low, low return, that we should change that policy and have more of our money in corporate paper. When you look at the companies that you currently, or your predecessor invested in, they are all excellent companies, from General Electric, now I can't find the page, but Wells Fargo, Toyota, Caterpillar, et cetera. And I just think we're just really not doing ourselves a service when we don't get a higher percentage in some of this, in some of these investments. How about corporate paper itself? What, what's a percentage there as opposed to?
It's at twenty-one, in terms of asset allocation?
Yeah.
It's at twenty-one percent, but some of the commercial, because some of the papers are coming due, or they will mature in December and January, and will be... or they will mature in December and January, and will be down to 20% again. We can, we'll certainly have more options to diversify the portfolio if it's up to 30%.
I think it's worth talking about and trying to move it from 20% to at least 25. I think that would make a, a big difference in the, in the portfolio.
That is a council policy, if the council, if the council votes for.
Well, let me just say this. Bottom line is that government doesn't have money at this point in the nation's history. State, fed, whatever it is, the government doesn't have money. Corporations, on the other hand, are at all-time highs in terms of their profits and money that they have in reserve, and so I think we should take advantage of that. And now I find the, I found the page. So, General Electric, JP Morgan, American Honda, Toyota, AT&amp;T, Wells Fargo, IBM, Caterpillar. Don't think they're going to go away anytime soon.
So, why isn't it more, is it the risk factor?
Well, because, yeah, in the past, I mean, I could see where you get a steady income from, from, you know, federal treasury bills and other investments, you get a steady income. Why do you want to go into a private sector investment? But that hasn't been the case for many years, and I just don't see why we can't increase the percentage. It's obviously up to the treasurer to then find the right corporate bond or corporate paper to invest in, but at least let's give them the option.
What do other cities do?
The other cities are higher than.
Yeah, Pasadena and, and the city of Burbank are at 30%.
30%.
Yes.
We've just been more conservative.
This question is being conservative, or?
Well, I think to Mr. Cantor's point, is it smart versus conservative, and somewhere those lines intersect.
What do you think?
And it, it doesn't mean that we will invest up to 25%. It just gives us the option, yes. Especially in the situation that we are in today where we are, where we're not in conformity with the city policy, where, where the overall funds were decreased because of the redevelopment agency transfer, and because of that, our percentages were off. So, it would be good to have a little leeway.
So, you think it's a decent idea?
Absolutely.
Cataro came up with some.
Yes, he came up with it, and I agree with him, and I'll say that on record.
Don't blame me.
Jeez, what is this?
Don't blame him.
Mr. Cho, what do you think?
I would concur that if you have the opportunity to invest, not the obligation, but the opportunity, give yourself the flexibility to invest in companies that you have vetted, that you believe will be here, that have staying power, that adhere to best management practices, it's always a good thing to give council the opportunity to make policy in a way that benefits us long-term.
You been talking to Cataro, too?
Every now and again, sir. He's like E.F. Hutton.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
Well, I mean, there is risk involved. I ever tell you about the GM stock that I own? You know what it's?
You keep bringing GM up.
No equities.
So, although the likelihood of, of that occurring to any one of these other companies may be remote, it was not entirely foreseeable that GM would have that sort of issue. I just need more, if the proposal is to raise that issue, or raise the allocation to 30%, uh.
Well, what do you recommend?
Put that on the future agenda so we can look at that.
I'm going to decide tonight.
Recommending 25.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to decide tonight, but I just think it's something we have to take a look at.
We can, what, what I propose to do, since I prepare reports on a monthly basis to the council, in about three months, I can come back with a report and give you comparisons with corporate medium-term notes as well as federal agencies and see where the rates are, and from there, we can make a decision in terms of the overall approach to the policy.
Not tonight, then.
Right.
It'll be agendized.
But, but more with a focus on companies that looked good, and there was no indication of their impending doom. I mean, I have one example in my mind, and that might be the only one out there, but if there are others, I'd certainly like to see that, and, and I hate to keep waving that flag.
There was actually another one, Chrysler.
Chrysler, I mean, it just deserves a little bit of more insight, I think, and analysis. I'll be happy to look into that. Clearly, we want to make as much money.
Absolutely. I agree with Mr. Najarian. I, these are taxpayer funds, and we have to be more than conservative on these funds. And the city policy already requires that these, these, these instruments, these bonds are more than rated 3 triple B., which is A minus or A three.
How long ago did we raise it to 20%? Has it been that way for years?
I was on the council when we did it. It's been a few years, yeah.
We just went up to 20.
Yeah, it's been a few years.
But we had raised it, it was below that previously?
Yeah, it was 10%, if I'm not mistaken.
In the past, yeah.
How we gone to 20?
My suggestion.
Mr. Sananian?
Just a strange thing here on, on the asset allocations. Money market mutual fund allocation is only 1% of the whole pie.
Right. Mutual, mutual fund is generally used.
1%? That seems like.
Yeah, mutual fund, usually we don't have any funds in there. Generally, it's a transition or a backup, backup account for our regular checking account. So, the interest rates that we earn on is very minimal, but we keep money in there just in case we need liquidity in a, in an instant.
Okay, thank you.
One, one to $5 million, that's what it is generally.
I, I have a question. We, LEAF has been so low for so long. Why do we continue to do business with LEAF? I mean, is there some reason?
Just liquidity?
Just for the liquidity, right?
Liquidity. We have considerable amount in LEAF. It was much more before. It was around 50 basis points. It's gone down to 25 at this point, which is really nothing when you consider the amount of money we have in that fund. However, our concern is not the yield on, on these funds, it's the liquidity, as the city manager said. If there's a need, if you make a decision and you need money within a day or two days, we have that available for you.
Now, you have over 50% liquidity.
Yes.
To maneuver.
It's down to 48%. That was one of the things, as of August, that was one of the items that I've been working on in terms of determining what is the reasonable range for the liquidity so we can invest the rest of the funds.
And the liquidity we need in case of a natural disaster? I mean, what exactly are we?
Anything that deals with the city. Any decisions that the council takes will deal with liquidity, either purchasing a piece of property or natural disaster or a fire.
Yeah, it is a very conservative portfolio. It always has been.
Yes.
That's Glendale.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion on?
We'll move to note and file the report.
Or change the, adopting the policy for now?
Now, we can bring that.
No, we'll, I'll be back with a change in the recommendations.
Yeah, but we have a motion, resolution adopting the policy.
Yeah, AB one.
Thank that. Motion eight C.
AB one.
AB one. No change. Status quo for now. Move in a second. Okay, roll call.
Council members Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Cataro.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Eight C. one?
I will move eight C. one.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Cataro.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Well, you slipped, you slipped back another quarter.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. How great evening.
See you in three months. Okay, what is next, please?
Next item is, next item is general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding tree trimming, tree removal and disposal services for electric line clearance in connection with specification number 3517. D. one is motion awarding a contract to West Coast Arborist Inc. an amount not to exceed $1.7 million and approving a 10% contingency.
Mr. Cho, this is just the street trees.
Line, line clearance.
The lines, yeah.
These are the line.
For GWP, went out for a bid this summer, is based on the spec.
Soul swords. As council may recall, we faced some pretty significant financial challenges in GWP.
Yeah.
Approximately two years ago, we suspended the program, but it is, it is critical. It's a critical program. So, this is just restarting something that we had, we had in place, and I think is essential to our, our maintenance function, and West Coast Arborists was our contractor previously. They were the sole bidder this time. They're also, as, as has been noted, they're our contractors for our street trees. Great firm, and we have a lot of confidence in them, and we recommend awarding this contract.
Okay. Is there a motion on A.D. one?
I will move A.D. one.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Council members Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Cataro.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. And A.E., Mr. City Manager, we're going to roll it over.
Yes, sir.
Another week.
Let me read the, oh, we, we are moving that to next week. Thank you.
So, any of you that came to speak on that item, apologize for you having to stay. Should have announced that at the beginning. Electrical people, you can leave. Hope you enjoyed the.
They knew they stood.
Well, they stayed for the trees. Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, what is next, please?
Next item is, we return to oral communication. A discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation or report. We have one card on this item, and it's Mr. Mike Mohill.
Mr. Mohill.
Baryyeryko, in Zbesik. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen in the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. And good to my friends and neighbors in the Armenian community. I am sad and disappointed that you chose to reelect our Najarian as the highest elected Armenian in your community. As a minority group in this wonderful country where opportunity is plentiful, you chose a person who has been beholden time after time, first to the union bosses, and then secondly, to you and your needs. The last election, he received about $14,000 from the campaign contributions of our city unions, like political flyers, phone calls, newspaper advertisement, and in 2009, received about $15,000 from the city unions. Mr. Najarian has approved every fee, tax, and new bond obligation that affect you and your family. Since on council, he has instrumental in allowing the cannibalizing of GWP funds to the tune of over $250 million on your hard-earned money. Your money primarily pays the excessive salaries and pensions of our city workforce. His actions have allowed our city employees to retire at age 50 or 55 with 30 years of service, with $100,000-plus retirement money for your, for life by the taxpayers that you and me are paying for. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Last time council member spoke before the council, he had, he explained, he attempted to explain, justify why he wanted to raise your electric rates about 30%. He notably neglected to tell you about the hidden taxes within the ordinance, including the utility users' tax of 7% and green fuel technology tax, which in five years will increase your total electrical rates between 30 and 70, 30 and 7% or more, excuse me. Mr. Najarian, the need of rate increases will primarily be directed toward the infrastructure of Glendale Water and Power facilities. What Mr. Najarian neglected to tell the Armenian community is that their interests come secondarily to the powerful influence of the public unions' pay-to-play politics. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. To the non-Armenian community, Councilwoman Laura Freeman, action to raise your electric rates was no different. Since 2009, she has approved every fee, tax, bond, and transferred over millions of dollars of your hard-earned money by the way of the GWP and funneling that line share into the pockets of our city workforce. During a recent city council meeting, Councilwoman Freeman's campaign contributions were highlighted by this speaker. Her contention was that she only received about $1,000 from each of the city four unions, totaling about $4,000 due to Glendale's campaign limit law. When this speaker challenged her allegations, in fact, she benefited by contributions in excess of $12,000 in union money. She responded by claiming she could not possibly have benefited by that magnitude because there were only 12, here there are not, excuse me, 12 unions. Councilwoman Freeman is disingenuous. Her argument was another clear attempt to mislead the public. The facts are clear on record, as stated on the city website as of March 31. Campaign contributions from only three city unions were $18,600. Many of our residents left countries where oppression, government prevailed and had no say. In Glendale, our politicians often meet secretly behind closed doors rather than open sessions. This results in the rule of law and, and orders succumbing to corruption. Our city today is ruled by our city unions, who have spent thousands of dollars in campaign money to influence who our elected officials are. The politicians have time after time twisted the rules of law for the benefit of city employees and not for the voters who put them into office. Council members and the union bosses are counting on the usual backers where they polarize the voters. The bottom line is our politicians are thinking that we are ignorant, that we're not going to say anything, that we're going to take it, we're going to sit on our hands, we're going to take the abuse, we're going to take the corruption, we're going to take the debt, we're going to take the fees, we're going to take the taxes, and the people will do nothing. Are they, ladies and gentlemen in the viewing audience, mission accomplished? What are we going to do? Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Well, I have no more speakers.
I have new business.
You what?
New business.
Okay, good. Good business, Freya.
Foral communication's over. I make a motion that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with Sherri Lawrence to assist on various cases being handled by the city attorney's office. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for work as assigned by the city attorney.
Mr. Seton, roll call.
Council members Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Cataro.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Now, there being no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Is there a second? We adjourned at 7:30. Until next week.